Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's August 25th of 2022. Welcome, everyone. Let's start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, let me take attendance here. We've got six members. So everyone can vote. Okay, so we've got Howard Burgess remotely, we've got Norm Cohen, we've got Andy McCain, Jerry Sterns, Jim Hall, and myself. And again, welcome. First item for tonight is approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve. Second?
Gary, thanks. Andy, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? opposed? Okay, unanimous. No public here, so we can skip right over that. And there's really no new business tonight, so we'll skip over that and go down to old business on the agenda. And some things have been happening mostly because of Bill's hard work on the informational building permit that we've been talking about for a couple months now. So we had this form, the application, the permit form, we looked at last time and we made a few change, Bill made a few changes in that. And we've got the questionnaire. And I can't put my hand on it right now, but that was sent out to everyone. Bill worked on stiffing up the questionnaire. I don't know where that went. Does everyone see that? And then he put all the stuff, well, everything except the permit application and and the questionnaire together in this packet on your desk.
Can we still modify this at this time or no?
Yes, we certainly can.
Okay.
And we wouldn't be finalizing it anyway, going to the select board, but we
Well.
we could vote to approve.
We wanted. When would be appropriate?
Anytime.
Okay, section five, exemption from permit requirement. Vertical expansion of an existing building or structure that is not accompanied by an increase of the footprint of the building or structure or an increase in the number of bedrooms. I see a real hole in that, in that someone puts a room over their garage and calls it a bonus room. They could materially be increasing the square footage of the residence by quite a few square feet. And regardless of what they call it, it will probably be a bedroom.
And Barb?
Yeah.
And I agree with with him on that. That I questioned that same statement because if you have a dwelling, if you have a one-story dwelling and they're going to put a second story onto it, it's going to be doubling the square footage. And so I question why we would exempt that.
Exempt it at all? Is that what you're saying?
Right, yes.
I would, I would suggest that we just delete that paragraph in its entirety.
Okay.
Well, the first, you know, number one is a structure less than 100 square feet. We don't pick those up. We don't appraise them or anything. So I mean, that that statement is as good, I think. Just number, number one.
Oh, oh, no, I didn't mean, I'm sorry, I didn't mean the section five, just that particular paragraph.
Just
just vertical expansion through bedrooms.
Okay, number two. Okay, yep.
Yeah, the second, the second paragraph in section five, I would, is what I'm suggesting we delete. So I guess I'll make a motion of that.
I think before we do that, I think we might have some more
Oh, okay.
suggestions. And Norm, you've got the floor.
Thank you. We think it'd be, let me start off. I spoke to Barbara and I sent her an email about my concerns. She pointed me to the Enabling Statute 24 VSA 1974. And I looked at that. Then I sent an email back with my concerns. Would it be easier for you folks to have this in front of you? Maybe Bill could copy it real quickly?
I can get people on line.
I'm sorry?
People like, well, Dana just joined, but Dana and Howard don't have it, do they?
No, Howard doesn't have it.
Norm, why don't you just go down your suggestion?
Um, it seemed to me that the
They're mostly in section seven, right?
Yeah, there are two in sec-, well, in section one, I had a little typo, but I think Bill picked that up. Also, I was concerned that every, while the initial language of the statute of the regulation, the preamble paragraph talks about commercial buildings, there's any building and it includes commercial. All the other material just seems to imply a residence talks about bedrooms, doesn't really focus on commercial. And I didn't know whether it gave the people applying sufficient notice that commercial comes into play here.
Commercial is required to have permits by the state of Vermont.
If it's over an acre or under an
It doesn't matter if it's a commercial building, under an acre, it's required to have permits by state of Vermont.
Well, I understand that.
Building, building, plumbing, electrical, fire safety. So I don't know that we can really have, we don't have any jurisdiction over, you know, I don't think.
But that's not quite my point. I haven't made myself understand that. We claim to have jurisdiction in our preamble.
Section one, the purpose?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me see. Well, I thought it did, maybe.
Yeah, I don't see it there.
Let's see. I thought it did. All right, let's, let's skip over that since it looks like I'm all. There's no reference in here. We talk about our financial penalties. The state statute authorizes injunction in inappropriate cases. And I just thought in terms of giving notice to the, to the public that we want, might want to make in section seven with the following statement. Just make some statement that section. Just make some section, some reference to adding an appropriate case. An appropriate case is the town may seek injunctive relief. Just seems to me that would give them fair warning. Somebody fair warning that if they're out of line, they continue to be out of line, that the town, actually the language be, the town may seek injunctive relief as provided in 24 VSA 1974, small a. And that would give, give the citizens or the developers sufficient notice that if they're out of line, that remedy is available to the town. I think that's fair to do that.
Should we add that to the first sentence in section seven? It shall be enforced as provided by the statute you just mentioned.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, that would be fine.
And what's your wording again, Norm?
Well, I think you might want to add this to it. Oh, for instance, the ordinance shall be enforced as provided in 24 VSA 1974A. And as such, the town may seek injunctive relief in the appropriate case.
In appropriate cases?
Yes, that's fine.
Did you have another one?
Yeah, but you know, what's happened, what I was working from and what I'm seeing here, two different things. Hold on a second. Terms of structure.
But so
We're trying to keep up with Bill here.
The, on the second page, as I've got up on the screen here too, like I have under the table of contents, I have what I added to it. Because our ordinances have about eight or 10 different formats, which is very difficult to try and follow. And we are missing a lot of revision dates and adapt dates because of that. So this is, this is the format I'm trying, I'm going to try to put in. So that's why I have like a revision of the front page there, what's being changed. So what changed, but it didn't change any language, Norm. So none of it should, the titles are the same, the, I had sections, section names, but everything else is the same. The titles and the language is the same.
Hold on a second, Bill. The copy I was working for from in section seven. I'm sorry, in section four. Is much different now.
What's different about it?
Well, the one I have, section four starts in lieu of the civil penalties provided in subsection B of this section. And there is none.
There was no
Here's what I had.
I can do, you have the original ordinance, I can, I can, I can do that thing.
Where you got that, Norm? I don't know where you got that.
I'm not following that either. Well, I don't find it now either, but I can tell you I have it.
Are you looking at the right ordinance?
Yes. This was, might be an earlier edition. There's something in between.
That would be a problem. That's under violate, that's under Okay, so you're, get your pages out of order. Yeah, that's, it's under enforcement. That's, 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 that's under the enforcement tab.
Oh, there it is. That's where the municipal traffic comes up?
Yeah.
Okay.
That seems to be incorrect or just out of place. I don't know why. And the subsection B should be deleted also.
Subsection.
There's subsection B there.
Yeah, I don't know about that. But let's take care of the municipal traffic complaint. So in the new version by Bill, on page four, as part of section seven, after the first list of violation numbers, there's a paragraph. And at the end of that paragraph, it says if they want to decline, to contest the municipal traffic complaint, I think we just need to take traffic out of there. Okay. And case the waiver fee. And Bill, it looks like you increased some of these fees, these penalties?
That's, that's, I didn't, I didn't change any wording. I didn't change any amounts, any words. I corrected some grammar problems, but there's correct spelling and things like that. But I did not change any, any subterfuge.
Okay.
So what, what are we going to take out? Oh, on line 17, the municipal traffic complaint?
Yeah, take out traffic.
And then in the first line of that same sentence or paragraph, there's a reference to subsection B, and I couldn't find one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't think that was
It wasn't subsection B.
I think, I mean, it's referring to the list of penalties just prior to that. Before that, so I, I think
But there's no delineation though.
We could just say provided above.
That's fine.
So even in the original copy, there was no B.
And
It's only, it was one, two, three, and four. I just forgot the number is one, two, three, and four, but there was no, there wasn't ever a B, subsection B in the ordinance.
Maybe at some point. So we'll just put above in there and take out in subsection B of the section.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine with me. Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
How do you want, what do you want to do?
In that paragraph between the two lists of, of amounts for penalties. In lieu of the civil penalties, penalties provided above, instead of provided in subsection B of the section.
Okay, so, okay.
Anything else, Norm?
No, I think that that's it, if you're
I think I've asked you this question before, Bill, but how old do you think these penalty amounts are?
The date I could find on this was April of 2008. So I'm guessing April 2008.
Oh.
Yeah.
When I read 24 VSA, what I have it here, those penalties were daily penalties. It's so much per day.
There are, there are ordinances we have that do, that have daily, daily penalties or weekly penalties and then
And I didn't know whether it was an oversight or deliberate. I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. But the enabling legislation does provide for daily penalties.
Right. And Kevin Brown told me they can be as high as 800 a day.
Yes, that's correct.
Now.
And I just, what, you know, we had had no discussion of it. I don't know whether it was deliberate that we made a decision or that just weren't aware and didn't consider it. So I just throw it out for what, what it's worth.
What does the group think? Do you, do you think these amounts mean anything?
No.
No.
Dana's got his hand up.
No, because I know from experience and, and working in other towns, the attitude is, I'll build it now and, and I'll pay the fine later.
Right. So even 800 wouldn't be much for a deterrence?
800 a day might be.
A day? Per day it would. But certainly not in the scope of building today at $200 fees.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
It's lunch.
Dana?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Sorry, I was a little late joining the meeting. I was having a little, some technical difficulties. The, I, I think we had part of this discussion last time, if I remember, and if the minutes reflected that conversation. And I thought that we had, were inclined to follow council's recommendation and the interpretation that Bill just mentioned, that those fines could be daily. I would not be opposed to that if we really want to bring this into compliance.
Okay, Norm?
Just for everybody's information, the first line, the first paragraph of section 24, title 24 VSA. I'm sorry?
Just a minute, Dana. Go ahead.
Could you hear me? That's my question. I'm just checking to make sure that I'm, I'm audible on your end.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. So the statute says, a civil penalty of not more than $800 may be imposed for violation of a civil ordinance. Each day the violation continues shall constitute a separate violation. And my sense is, the language says shall constitute, that we don't have the discretion to do it any other way.
So that these amounts, whatever amounts we come up with, need to be per day?
Per day.
We have that language, the each day shall constitute a violation. We have that in other ordinances. So we can just add that right after where is it? A civil penalty, a civil penalty of not more than whatever amount we choose. But if we can, we can add that sentence after that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Each day.
Each day shall constitute a separate violation.
Yep.
Where does, where are you going to put that?
Line 103.
I'm sorry?
Line 103.
On page three.
Each day, okay.
So what do we think about the amounts now?
Limit. This is strange. Hold on a second. We just, okay, it's been reduced from 800 to 500. All right. So
Do we think the daily, these as daily penalties
Yeah.
are good enough? I mean, go up to 800. We can put whatever we want in here, really.
All depends on whether they're going to be enforced or not.
Well, I think, so the first days would be the first, is first violation. Second day is like, so it's, it's the, it would be the fourth day and, and above will be the $800 will be each day. So they're, they're going to accumulate.
Well, it's interesting. I don't read first violation as meaning the day. Right? Um, that's not clear to me.
So then do we need to define what a violation is?
Yeah, we probably should. Uh, we first day of violation, second day of violation.
Well, if we're going to say a civil penalty of not more than $500 may be imposed for each day of violation of this, for each day of a violation of this ordinance, then it, then I think that takes care of it.
That's, that's confusing to me. So
For each day, for each day. A violation, a violation of this ordinance occurs.
Why don't we just, just so that it's, it's clear, might be a little bit redundant here. But when, when we get down to the amounts, it's first day violation, second day violation, third day violation, fourth and subsequent days.
Or a day after each, first, second, third, and fourth.
And then the last one subsequent.
No.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Yep, good.
And that applies to the, the next section too, right?
Yep. Waivers.
Okay. Okay. So we'll keep the amounts as they are. Anything else, Norm?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, so Andy, you were going to make a motion for the change on page two, the section five.
Now, I'm going to make a motion that in section five paragraph two, that a vertical expansion and ends in bedrooms be deleted.
And would you include in your motion what we just discussed in section seven?
And
We had six different changes.
And in section seven, adding but also after 1974A, the town may seek injunctive relief. And then second paragraph between four and A, we add each day. So read imposed for each day a violation of this ordinance.
There's that.
And then lastly, the word day would be inserted between the words, the number of the violation and the actual word violation.
Or both the
Right, it's first day violation, second day violation.
Civil penalties and the waiver.
All right, and then striking in line 114, striking in subjects, in subsection B and substituting the word above. And in line 117, deleting the word traffic.
And then put day in the next set of violations.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, that, no, I said after the number.
And both of them.
After the number, yeah, okay. Lines 19 through 122, inserting the word day after the number.
Oh, per day.
Hey, good job.
I think the revisions, I've already started on this.
What's that, Bill?
Under the table of contents, I listed the revisions I made to this, giving it to you.
So you want to include them in the motion?
Yes, please.
Oh, yeah.
So, pardon me on
Bill would like to include in the, in the the revisions he's already made on the, on the first page.
Okay, and also include the revisions made by Bill Sweet on page one.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Discussion on the motion on the floor.
I'm just not clear about one thing. Line 114, what was your change, Andy?
Says Bill, it says, Norm, in lieu of civil penalties provided, it used to say in subsection B. We're going to, we're going to scratch that and we're going to put provided above this, in, of this section.
Provided above of this section?
Yeah, meaning that meaning the violation dollar amounts.
Okay, that, that seems awkward to me.
Nor, Norris is going to say provided above.
Yeah.
Comma, that's it.
Yeah, take out of the section.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, my bad.
Yeah, I think we can. I think so.
Barbara, this is Dana, can you hear me?
Um.
Barbara?
Yes, Dana, we can.
Hold on.
Yeah. Just a minute to Dana. Okay, finish up, Norm. You got some words?
Only because it's still not clear. Okay, I guess the second part is the, is the waiver if they're uncontested. So I guess it's okay to say above. I just wanted to check if that squared up.
Yeah, it's
Okay, sorry to be so picky.
But thanks for, thanks for picking out what you're finding what you did. Dana?
Yeah, I got booted out and so I'm now on the call by phone. Did you address number two? That says a civil penalty of not more than 500. If you're going to move it to 800 in the next section and in number three, then that should also be 800.
We're not going as high as that's as high as we can go. We decided not to go to 800.
So you're going to keep in section, in section three, you're going to keep the fourth and subsequent violation at 500?
Not in section three.
The permit officer or other issuing municipal official is authorized to recover by the issuance by the issuance of a municipal complaint, civil penalties in the following amounts. First day of violation, two hundred, second day of violation, three hundred, third day of violation, four hundred, and then I heard Bill say something about changing fourth and subsequent violation, day of violation to eight hundred. Is that, did that not happen?
That's not in the motion.
We're gonna leave it five hundred, I believe is what we did.
You're gonna leave it, fourth and subsequent violation will be five hundred.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, I apologize. I got booted off and I did, I must not have heard the motion.
That's okay. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Oh, the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'll, I'll chime in as an aye on the, um, favor Barbara.
Okay, and aye for me too, Bill. Okay, so we've, Bill will make those changes. Um, I won't be able to present this to the next select board meeting, it's Tuesday. Um, but are we okay, um, presenting this as well as the new permit? As well as the questionnaire? Select board.
It would be.
Yeah. You want a motion?
Sure. Let's have a motion.
Um, I'm gonna move that um, the, the board chair present, present the revised draft of the town of Rudden, uh, permit tracking ordinance and the, uh, attached questionnaire with it to the select board at their next meeting.
Did you say the permit application?
No, but I will say.
Uh, Andy, I think it's gotta be the subsequent meeting. She said it won't be ready for the next Tuesday.
The next appropriate meeting.
Next appropriate meeting. I'll second that if, if you've got the line that's worked out.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any opposed? Okay. That's unanimous. Okay, thanks Bill for
Yep.
All of that work and Norm. We went to our town attorney and, and my question to him is, can, can we go any further with this ordinance? Without zoning, so he didn't find all the things that you found. Oh, Norm, so.
No, he's, he's younger.
That's.
Mo- most are.
Okay, next on the agenda, um, so we've got the, the pocket park partially designed. So it needs to go to a next step of design, um, so we can get some real numbers attached to it. Uh, and some, and so that in some choices given to the select board about what should be in the park and what, what different components would cost. We have, um, there's this first ti- this first grant was through the agency of commerce and community development. It was a municipal planning grant. We can go for another municipal planning grant to do the rest of the design, but there will not ever be money in that, from that source for construction implementation. There's another, a new round of that municipal planning grant coming up and I think they haven't, um, released the details, but it's usually like first of October or end of, it's October-ish, is, is the deadline for that. There's another grant through ACCD. It's called the Vermont Community Development Program. And, um, it has uh, its deadline for applications coming up September thirteenth, but it, it could provide money for planning grants anywhere from three thousand to sixty thousand dollars worth. And it will do the construction grants. Um, and they usually, uh, they run from fifty thousand to a million dollars. So, um, of course, this would be the select board's decision whether to go for one of these grants. Does this group wanna make a recommendation on any of these? Or both?
If you understand correctly that one grant is only for planning purposes, but the second grant is planning plus the possibility of construction money.
Right.
And well, I, I think of course that's the way we should go. We, at least we should recommend it. You need a motion to recommend, to authorize you to recommend it.
Mm-hmm.
So moved.
Just the latter, just the, just the one that's called the Vermont Community Development Program, the second one.
Well, is there any advantage to going for the former? And, and can we do both at the same time?
Yeah.
Why would we not do that?
I don't know.
Is there any disadvantage to going for both grants at the same time?
I don't think there is.
They're from different agencies?
Yeah, I mean, the, the advantage to another municipal planning grant, which is just for planning, is that we've got a track record with them. And this will be a continuation of what we've done. The other one, um, you know, includes all the steps that we need, has more money, there's probably more competition. Um, but.
Why not make an attempt to do both?
Yeah, I can double check that, make sure I'm, I am correct in that. Um, but yeah, we could. Okay, anyone wanna make a motion that, uh, we propose to the select board? That if possible, we'd like to apply for both of these. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, that was unanimous too. So Bill, you'll be filling out these applications, right? Uh, next in, in old business, uh, we've got the townwide celebration coming up um, on Saturday. The energy survey is ready for that celebration. We'll be handing out these cards.
I'm not gonna be there.
You don't have to be there with this card. Um, so the QR code here gets you right to the survey. And they'll probably use the QR code in, in the circle coming up in September and, and oh, front porch forum and other areas.
Yeah.
So hopefully most people will use the online form to, be much easier to tabulate what the, what the answers are. Uh, if you get any questions, um, this pretty much should be by household. As opposed by, by person, the questions are really designed, um, to what the household has done and is thinking of doing. So i- if you get that question. So we'll be there, um, with this. I'll have some hard copies if people wanna fill out the, the survey. Um, Andy's gonna help out, Mary Beth, uh, will have the map of the pocket park. If anyone has any questions about that. And answer any other questions, I that people.
Gonna be a nice day. It's a good thing.
Yeah, the weather looks good.
So anything else on that? Uh, we'll probably keep the, the survey up through, through October. A lot more publicity once we get into September. But this is the official launch Saturday. Okay, um, that should take care of that. Down to announcements and news. Let's start with uh, we've got a letter from the law firm that includes our town attorney. Um, that's the Langrock Sperry and Wool letter you have here. Uh, can't say that I've gotten a letter like this before. And, you know, it asks, it's, it's asking for us to sign off, me to sign off, that all of the, all of the properties of Kenny Motors are in compliance with applicable municipal regulations. It's like, I don't think I'm, I I don't think I should sign this.
Cause those, it doesn't, that, doesn't that fall into, uh, municipal regulations would be state? Wouldn't it, wouldn't, I mean, that's still a municipal regulation, right? The, well, that's state.
Yeah.
I just, it'd be hard to, it'd be hard for you to sign off on some, or us to sign up on something like that, not knowing what violations they may have of a lot of different.
I think we just make a motion to just say
Well, no. Further discussion.
I mean, I could bring it to the select board to let them know that, that a certain law firm is. Yeah.
Well, I don't think we should answer this without first saying, please be advised. Or, or bring it to Kevin's, uh.
He's in the law firm, how does that work?
Well, the tension that, uh, the, you know, we're very uncomfortable with the letter.
I think, I, I, I think, I, personally, I think before we spend any money on the attorney, why don't we ask the select board? I mean, I mean, why wouldn't, why would we spend any money asking? Because I think they're gonna give the answer anyway.
I was the only one getting this, right?
Yeah.
Thing is, it's addressed to us.
Well, it's addressed to the.
It's not addressed to the select board.
But, but they certainly would, I would think they would wanna help make a decision, I would think.
Well, I don't think.
We just make our decision to, to say no to them and, and then if they wanna go to the select board.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent. I'm just not a big fan of spending a bunch of money on an attorney.
No, I don't think we should spend any money.
That's all.
I mean, one option is to just to go to the select board and say, our recommendation is that we, we.
I think they, we would like to respond to the planning commission does not review municipal ordinance compliance. Have a nice day.
Yeah.
That sounds, that sounds.
Norm.
I, I just have a problem with uh, taking any action on this letter whatsoever um, without bringing to the attention of the town attorney that there's a conflict of interest here. And that we don't think in view of what, of the apparent conflict of interest, we can respond.
Right.
Why don't we just respond that way?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Without, without, without initiating any kind of money.
Yeah, well, I just think.
But, but I wonder, I mean, doesn't the select board wanna know about?
Well, I think you should.
potential conflict.
Bring it up Tuesday and just, I, I, I can, I can give them copies of it and we'll, like, it's, you, this group doesn't have the information to be able to make it, make that, to answer that appropriately, so.
Yeah.
Just, I, I would punt it and.
Simply put.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
And not require a motion or.
Yeah, I just don't think we should.
Don't just I, 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 my, my thought would be at, at, at this level to say, we're, we're declined, take action, we'll bring it to the board, like that, like, it's just, it's a very strange request.
It is. Uh, Dana, did you get a copy of this?
No.
I did not.
Okay, it says, uh, dear.
Hold on, I can, oh, he's not, he's.
Dear Ms. Pulling, please be advised that I represent Kenny Motors Limited, the owner of the above properties. Um, I would appreciate the planning commission providing me with a letter confirming that the above properties are in compliance with applicable municipal regulations. If there is a fee for these certifications, or if you needed any additional information regarding this request, please let me know.
Um, yeah, thanks Barbara, uh.
And it's the two locations of Kenny Motors.
Right, but what everybody has already said, that's not our, we don't do that review. That would have to be submitted for, in my opinion, an independent review that Kenny Motors should be paying for because we cannot ask, one, we can't ask for a legal opinion from our um, our attorney because there is a conflict of interest that Norman, uh, mentioned. But I think that, um, uh, anything that they submit, uh, in terms of being in compliance would need a third party, uh, reviewer to validate that. And that would probably be select board making that determination, not us. And I don't think we can use our town attorney because of the aforementioned conflict of interest. So it's a complicated scenario and I think that what Bill suggested is probably the right action, just say that we are uh, not in a position to offer this and pass it along to the select board.
Okay, Norm.
I still think we do not respond to this at all, except say uh, there's a conflict of interest here and until that is straightened out, we do not feel we can respond.
You don't feel, oh, we have to acknowledge though that we've received this?
I would say yes, we have, we have your letter or the select board should. We, well, our planning commission has a letter. Uh, there appears to be a conflict of interest in that Kevin Brown represents the town and under these circumstances, we don't feel we can res- it's appropriate to respond at this point.
But it's not really because there's, and it's not really because there's, just because there's a conflict of interest, we shouldn't respond.
No, no, we shouldn't, even a conflict or not, we shouldn't respond.
Right.
But how about if we just how about if we just respond by saying, we're in receipt of your letter and we forward it to the select board?
That sounds good, Andy.
Because, Norm, if this came from any other law firm, it wouldn't change the answer that you don't have the information to make the decision for them.
I agree.
It doesn't change the outcome. It, and, and I, I, you know, I would, I would kind of agree that we, Kevin would be the one to tell us if there's a conflict or not. Like, he would be the one to say, yes, for this matter, I'm conflicted out or he's not, but if it came from anybody else, it, we would say, give the same answer that you don't have the, and you don't, you don't have the ability to review that appropriately.
Well, you know, the other side of it is, I mean, it jumps off the page to me, but at the same time, it's not our business if they wanna.
The interesting thing here is.
I'm sorry?
The Langrock Sperry and Wool, oh, Wool is, uh, who our town attorney worked with this part.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's the conflict we're, we're dealing with. Uh, well, maybe we do need a motion here.
I'd like, like, Andy just.
I'll make my motion then.
Yeah, I'll second it, but go ahead, Andy.
My mo- my motion is that we we respond to the letter for Langrock Sperry and Wool by saying that we are forwarding this letter to the select board, uh, and that's it.
How about a CC to Kevin Brown ESQ?
Sure.
That's good.
Okay.
Then, then he will, he will jump at it, for sure.
Yeah. So we'll, okay, any further discussion? I think we'll well, do you have time? Do we have time to get that letter out, Bill, before the select board meeting?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's a crazy week.
I, I don't, I don't know.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't. We're gonna send it and, you know, it may be before the select board or after.
Time will be the time that it takes.
Yeah, they get it, they get it.
You got my second, wait, Bill and Barbara?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got it, we heard, you can hear you, just fine. Any other discussion? All those in favor of Andy's, Dana's motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Uh, one more announcement, uh, we, last meeting, we talked about river corridors. And then I was, uh, talking to this, having some initial conversations with the select board a- about that. Uh, we're going to have in an upcoming select board meeting, the flood plain manager from DEC, the one for this region of the state, come speak. And, um, give a little more detail about what these are and, and why they're needed. He's, he's a scientist. So that will be September thirteenth, if you wanna tune into that meeting. Um, his name is Kyle, uh, Me- Medash, I think is how he pronounced it, spelled M-E-D-A-S-H. And he'll be on the, the agenda for that night.
So select board meeting?
Yes.
And we.
Thanks Barbara.
Was he?
Yes. Yeah, Dana.
Oh, thank you, that's all I can.
Did you have something to say?
Uh, no, I just said thank you, that was useful.
Oh, okay. New problem. Any other announcements or news? From members?
Barb?
Yeah, Howard.
Have you ever got any more information on the canoe access, uh, that we've talked about on, for the, uh, pocket park?
Yeah, I talked to Bert McCann. And, um, yeah, I, it was an interesting conversation. And we may want, we, we should highlight that for the select board as we go forward with this park, about, you know, whether that is a safe place to have a, a launch. Whether we should be promoting a boat launch uh, there. He, he's, Bert McCann is a longtime kayaker and canoeist. And he's just a little leery, uh, right there at the bottom of the falls uh, about the flow at times. So it's, yeah, it's something to add to the discussion going forward.
Good, thank you.
That's what you, okay. Okay, let's move down to the minutes of August fourth.
Motion to approve the minutes of August fourth.
Thank you, Dana.
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Norm?
I have a couple suggestions, if I may. In the, well, page one, under commissioners, my commission members present, second line, it says, all members present are a voting member.
Mm-hmm.
I think it should read, all members present are voting members.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um under new business paragraph two, the two flood hazard permits have already been received since it has been posted. Should it be issued?
No. Cause they weren't issued at that point.
So there are two permit applications have been received? Not permits?
That's the notification, I think, Norm, with that, the notification.
It's just not clear to me, I'm not trying not to be difficult.
However you wanna say it, Norm, I, I don't know, okay.
To me, permits is a it, it's something that's been issued by the town. The application for a permit.
Sure.
Okay, permit applications. And I was going to mention, Bill, that I think the town has a role to play when, when these, uh, applications are made. I think the town, the, the municipality needs to forward that to DEC to, to show that we are
File it in land record. So the, the ordinance said we had to file a land.
There's something with DEC too, that, that, before they approve the permit, they wanna make sure the municipality is aware um, of that.
This, this is based upon our flood hazard regulation, not anything else.
Right.
But there's nothing in the regu- I didn't see anything in the regulation about having to forward it, that we forward it then on to DEC.
Yeah, it, it may be something that they've, they're requiring now since two thousand eight.
Okay.
Um
Well, that's fine, but yeah, this, this was, I'm, I'm just going by what the ordinance said, said, so I, I'll, I'll look at it though.
Yeah, I'll try to find the, the webpage for you.
So it's just a note. I have something, Barbara, on that same topic. It's just the notice, rather than saying it, maybe that it's a notice, right, Bill? Has been posted?
Yeah, since we, since we posted the, the flood hazard permit, right. We received
So a notice about it, okay. I mean, that might clarify it for Norm. Notice hasn't been posted, anyway, I don't know.
I, I didn't catch all that, Norm, did you? Can you repeat that, Dana?
Go in here.
Uh, you're breaking up.
He's, he's trying to clarify it, just, you could just, uh, uh, if we add the word application of a permit, it's fine, it's, it's just
Right. That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Norm?
Um, in old business paragraph one, uh, second sentence, no changes were suggested. But should it be, he did advise presenting it to the select board rather than just board?
Um, he, he, yes, but he, he did advise presenting it to this commission was the first step.
Well, what it, it says here, it says presenting it to the board.
I see that.
I thought it meant select board, if it meant to the commission, then it should say commission, to this commissioner.
I'm sorry, where are you?
In the meeting, you said select board.
Just think select board clarifies.
Well, it, it's fine, it's fine.
What's
Barbara, I'm lost. Can somebody help me out? Where, where are we now?
Uh, we're in old business number one. And so, uh, the second sentence, no changes were suggested, but he, being the town attorney, did advise presenting it to the board for comments before adoption.
New business? That, no, old business number
Dana, page, page one, old business number one.
Yeah, I got it, I'm there, sorry.
Frank said it's easier to get away in the room now.
Oh, it always is, but
Let, the last one, paragraph three, I think it should read a per day penalty up to eight hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Delete the words per day after the eight hundred. And I'm done.
Hey. Anything else on the minutes?
Uh, I have, I have one, Barbara.
Yes?
It's under old business, second page, number one. Uh, the event is coming up soon and will take place before our next meeting, it's actually after our next meeting. Cause this is our next meeting and it's happening on Friday.
Think you said before.
That's it.
Well, I misspoke.
I didn't hear either one.
Would, would, it's, it's a minor change, um, on the second page, Norm, number one, old business.
Mm-hmm.
The event will take place after the next meeting.
That's it, very simple.
We're correcting my statement.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, did you say it was before the next meeting? I apologize.
Uh, Bill says I did.
I'm pretty sure during the meeting that it was said before, that's why I wrote before, not after, so
That's okay, if that's what she said, don't worry about it. I, I just thought it was a typo.
Okay, any others? Did we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make an amendment to the motion that I made to, um, uh, accept the minutes as, um, revised.
Second.
And the person who seconded?
I think I seconded, but
Yeah.
I'll yield to my senior.
Okay, any more discussion on the minutes from August fourth? All those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
I'll just I'll recruise myself. Or abstain.
Okay. Good, okay. Thank you, interesting meeting tonight, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for putting up with me. Sorry about the technology.
That's okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sorry.
I moved.
Okay, we're adjourned.